Oh, this is, this is real.
Yeah, it's real.
Look at this.
There we go.
We waited just.
Just enough. For you, but we're cutting into Tim's time and he's anxious.
I timed myself at 28 minutes. So I think we're okay.
He says that to me every time he calls me.
So we are.
If you hear me going off though.
Jake?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Awesome.
So, welcome to the workshop on several tax incremental financing proposals. Jess?
Well, thank you very much for letting me come and show you guys what it is that we're thinking about doing. Obviously, we're looking for your support in some of these projects and would appreciate your feedback. We're at various different stages and some things are relatively contingent on other things. So we kind of wanted to give you the heads up where we're at and let you know. So, I think you guys had a preliminary page that kind of had the four projects. I'm going to kind of work through the four projects and let you know how they balance off of one another and give you an opportunity to ask any questions if you got them. So, uh, so the first project that I would talk about is the 700 block of South Main Street. And we're looking at that as the sawdust lofts kind of thing. So right now it sits as a vacant, empty site. My colleagues Andy and Cal have, through the RDA, I think, acquired an option to purchase it. And what they're looking to do is put a fair number of low-income housing apartment units there. On the order of 60-plus units are what they're looking at. So, just to give you an idea, there's still some things that are up in the air, but this is kind of the rendering that we have of what we're thinking about. And we're kind of thinking about probably three to four stories above one story of underground, but it's more raised parking, kind of similar to what the Anthem kind of looks like type thing. So, this is a potential rendering. This shows four stories above parking, but it may only end up being three stories, just to give you a visual of it. Here's another visual of it, a site plan sort of view. With the low-income housing tax credits, where typically you get points to apply for housing tax credits. And one of the things that they really try to do is, in this particular case, we're going for general family sorts of units. And so they really want a fair number of units that could fit a family. So, and they've got to be accessible from the first floor. So you've got to put a fair number of three-bedroom units on the first floor. This kind of gives you an idea of what it would look like, the floor plan on the first floor. They would pile up on top of that and beneath this first floor then would be parking, underground parking. So, like I said, we're looking at 60-plus units of low-income housing. Roughly 25% of them would be one-bedroom units. Roughly 50% would be two-bedroom units. Roughly 25% would be three-bedroom units. So from the tax credit application standpoint, they had to check a box as to what it was that they were targeting. They checked the box that said greater than 40% of the units would serve at most 60% of the area median income sorts of families. But the reality is they want tax credits on all the units. So all the units in there will be serving low-income sorts of families. Again, this project will only happen if these two gentlemen can acquire, and the two gentlemen are Andy, Dumkey, and Cal Schultz, if they can acquire a 9% tax credit from WIDA. Now, as opposed to you guys, I think, the council tonight, I think are considering Cabrini School as a TIF project, which is also a low-income housing tax credit project. That particular project is a 4% tax credit project, different than the 9%. The 9% ones, it's a higher percentage. This becomes extremely competitive statewide. And so much so that, you know, I looked at last year's awards. And last year, there were 26 projects that were awarded 9% tax credits throughout the state. And of those, I can say 25 of the 26, I could find obvious additional support. That just the low-income housing tax credits alone, you typically can't make it work financially. Unless, I will say, other support being either one, I know it's not necessarily support, but nonprofits. Housing authorities are in a different position. They don't necessarily have to pay tax. So that's kind of like the ultimate TIF per se. I appreciate that, like our housing authority, I think, pays pilot and that's something that they don't necessarily have to do. But that puts you in a better position to be able to make something like this work. So, when I looked at the 26 projects, I can say either there were, they were a nonprofit entity, or it was an adaptive reuse where they were doing historic tax credits. And that's the Cabrini project that you're considering tonight. That is in part why they can make the 4% deal work, is because that one is a historic tax credit project too. Or if they are not a nonprofit, or they are not receiving historic tax credits, then typically it's either TIF support from a municipality or substantial CDBG dollars in form of a grant to do this. Now, the one project that I identified that I couldn't find it, one, it may just be that I couldn't find it, but it also happened to be the very largest project in terms of the number of units. I think there was 136 units in Waukesha. So it may have been an economy of scale thing, or it may just be that I didn't find it. But to get the 9% sort of deal, WIDA awards you additional points in your application if you've got local community support. And just financially, you really need that local community support to be able to make something like this happen. You know, Andy and Cal are doing this under North Point Development. Now, I'll see that they've got. And I'll tell you, these guys are very successful in doing low-income housing tax credit projects as a private for-profit company. But they haven't done a whole lot here in Oshkosh as of late. And this is, they're kind of coming back saying, okay, we really, they're from Oshkosh. We really want to do stuff here. When I went back and looked at, say, tax incremental financing plans that Oshkosh has done, the last one that I saw that looked like it could have substantially supported low-income housing was the Division Street project back in 1997 that Brian Burns had kind of done. So it's been a while since we've supported Lytech projects with TIF. I know that we've got CDBG dollars and I know that is sometimes used to help it. But in large respect, I would kind of look at these Lytech things and kind of say, well, we as a community haven't done a substantial amount of low-income stuff. I appreciate, the housing authority certainly has, but from a private developer's standpoint, we haven't done much. And we're kind of, these guys kind of want to make up for that. So that's partly what we're doing here. One of the downfalls of this particular site is the fact that we know that there's environmental contamination. I think it was like a year and a half ago, I remember AECOM coming to the RDA and they were looking at potentially proposing doing some testing kind of thing. And I think Paul Tim said to the RDA, hey, look, we're looking at potentially upwards of a million dollars to remediate that site and the other site across the street. We don't know exactly what that dollar figure would be, but it could be a substantially large dollar figure. In part, this site plan, putting this courtyard along South Main, is in part to try to avoid where we know there's this obvious plume kind of thing. But.
Would that plume be impacted by partial underground parking, though?
Given that we're talking about a residential use, we've got to be as aggressive as we can be in terms of remediation. I think where it sits right now, yes, we're going to have to address a portion of it. And I don't quite fully know, do we got to take care of all of it because we're starting to dig into it? Or do we just have to deal with the portion that we're disturbing? I don't know that for sure. But I know that it could be a substantial cost. And so we are kind of factoring in worst-case scenario in terms of initial estimates. Admittedly, I think we've had a conversation with WEDC and they've said that they may be willing to help us out in terms of doing the SAG grant to identify the problem. And then potentially a Brown's Field sort of grant to help remediate the problem. We don't know exactly what that will be. We got to identify what the issues are first. But when I can point to all these other projects and say, typically you need public assistance, it doesn't help when we're also coming onto a site where we know there's also substantial environmental contamination remediation that needs to happen. Yeah, so the one thing that's different about these Lytech projects relative to some of the other projects that we're bringing forward, is that with the Lytech project, when you do the TIF analysis, I'm really kind of factoring into a rate of return on what the tax credit investor would get. That that's really the key point, is you get these tax credits, but then you got to turn around and sell them. And in effect, this tax creditor investor becomes owner of that property for 10 to 15 years of a hold period. And so that investor is the one that you've got to convince that they're getting a reasoned rate of return before they would pay to buy those tax credits and actually give you the cash to do this project. And typically, a tax credit investor is looking for between 4% to 6% to jump into something like this. And this particular location is in TIF 20. It's already in a TIF. But the problem is, is that's going to take two years to get this project built. And then you've got another year for it to get assessed and then another year for you to actually get a TIF payment back. So you've really only got eight years left to contribute towards this. And if I use that eight years and look at a rate of return on this, I'm only at a 0.74%. A tax creditor investor is not likely to jump in on a project like that. So what we're proposing here is, we've put in the application. I think the city, I think, may have written a letter suggesting we're interested in supporting. But we don't have details of what exactly that would be. And so what we're looking for is, in April, we would anticipate understanding if we got that award. If we got that award, then we would ask to create a new TIF so that we could extend out the length of time that we could ask for increment to try to get that rate of return for the tax creditor investor up to, I put out at 22 years, a 4.5% return might be enough to attract an investor to jump into this sort of project. So that's what we are looking at. If we don't get the tax credits, this project doesn't happen. Questions, comments?
What, what happens after that 10 to 15 years? Your investor ideally has the return after that 10 to 15 years. They have an option to, I mean, they can, they can turn around and sell it anytime they want. But that's typically the time that they start selling that.
Typically, on the private side, the developer, so Andy and Cal, would have to guarantee that they would be able to buy out. That would be part of the negotiation, a part of the contract. And that becomes one of those contentious issues in negotiating a contract to buy that out. But typically, Andy and Cal would have to, it wouldn't have to be them that does it, but they would have to guaran, they would basically have to guarantee if they couldn't find anybody else, they would have to.
They would do it, sure.
To do it. But after 10 to 15 years, you've kind of got a long-term understanding of the performance of this. You should be able to make something like that happen. That these Lytech projects are one of the least foreclosed upon sorts of developments. You know, it's a funny financing strategy, but it does tend to work. And it gets us low-income housing.
Sure, now, unless I misunderstood you, what I think you said in relation to the under 40% of units at greater, at 60% or area, you know, of the area median income, those are, those would be considered 100% low-income tax, tax, so they would be income-based rent? Okay, and then the other ones would be more of a market rent?
No, we would do all 100%.
You would do all 100%?
Right.
So, but minimally, you have to have 40%?
Minimally, we have to do this, right.
Okay.
We would anticipate doing income averaging. So there would probably be some 30%, some 40% AMI, up to 80%. But on an income averaging standpoint, I think we got to hit like 45% on average, kind of thing. So it is serving the low-income.
Okay.
Do all the units have underground parking in the plan? Or is it certain ones that would or wouldn't, based on income?
Everybody right now has a minimum of one parking unit. There is some effort to potentially expand acquired lands neighboring there to provide for more parking than what you see at the moment. I'll say that.
So, my question would be then, since it's in an opportunity zone, do they also factor in that tax benefit?
So the major, the major benefit, well, one, no, in this case, they wouldn't because they wouldn't have, they would have to have bought into it, meaning the tax creditor investor would have to have bought into it by April 15th of this year to know that they would qualify for all the benefits. The other issue is the major benefit of opportunity zone is for holding it for 10 years and that if there's a substantial appreciation in value, but because we're dealing with a low-income property, these tend to not substantially increase in value where you would see that reward of not having to pay capital gains on the increased value. So in this case.
Would that also be true of the other Lytech projects?
The other Lytech, the Cabrini is not in an opportunity zone.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking of another location, sorry.
I don't think these other projects are technically in opportunity zones, but I don't believe any of these are going to utilize capital gains monies to make the projects happen. Like the next one I'm part of, I don't have any capital gains money to contribute to it. Any other questions on this one? Okay, then we should continue to roll. All right, the next project that we are interested in doing is Smith School project. As I'm sure you might have read in the newspaper, the same group, myself, Andy, Cal, and Chet have purchased the Smith School from the Oshkosh School District. So here's what I'm going to say about this. This is the contingency one, that in part, we are setting ourselves up where if, for some reason, Andy and Cal don't get the 700 block tax credits, then what we have said to those guys is, Chet and I will back off of this project and you guys can take that and do Smith as a tax credit project next year. All right? But I will say, Andy and Cal have been very successful at getting tax credits. Therefore, I'm anticipating we're not going to do this as a low-income tax credit project. That if they get 700 block, they can't do another project in Oshkosh until that project gets completely filled. All right, so they couldn't possibly do it. But I will show you this just as, hey, if we were to do this project as a Lytech project and go for a 9% sort of deal, we would have to add more units to it. And probably this would be flipped around a little bit, but over here, do I have? Yes, I do. Well, I don't really see that. So, on the far right, you kind of got the original school and the new gym that was put on. The 13 units are the original school. Down below is the gym. And then we would have to, for a 9% deal, you've really got to get up to 60 units. So we would have to add in addition to it. The dilemma with that, though, is that from a historic standpoint, the National Park Service doesn't want the new building to dominate over the original building. And so while Chet has drawn this and it technically works out, they would probably want to switch the parking stalls with that 10 units per floor. That would probably have to be a three-story building to put a total of 60 units in there. But it could technically fit, all right? So that's kind of the contingency. If we don't get the 700 block, then we would probably be looking at this as a potential low-income housing tax credit project, potentially. But we are going to assume that they're going to get their tax credits. And so what we're proposing is to do this as market rate. And so then, we wouldn't combine any buildings. We would focus on, really, a phase one, we would just be doing the original buildings and the new gym. And then leave, there would be a substantial amount of additional lands left over. At some point, we would probably come in and do some townhouses, something like that. This is kind of the floor plan. And in my mind, when I see schools and consider redevelopment for apartments, it becomes pretty obvious where the apartments are. The classrooms just turn into apartments, per se. That's the historic building. Over on the gymnasium, all those three upper things would be apartments. And then the gymnasium would probably turn into six townhouse sorts of units. So this is what we're looking at doing, 25 market rate apartments. Again, we're attempting to get this listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Ooh, I spelled that wrong. One of the issues with doing that, though, is that there are substantial costs in doing a historic preservation building and it's implicitly inefficient. So I want to tell you what I'm talking about when I say that. When you do a historic preservation project, it's not just the exterior. The interior, any interior fabric that you have, the Park Service is going to be concerned about. And so I'll show you, let me show you this. Here's kind of the front vestibule and the stairs coming in and going up. That is something that the Park Service is going to be substantially concerned about. They're going to want to feel like when you walk into this building, it truly was a school. And so when I think about efficiency, so the vestibule there is in the right, the blue section there, that whole thing there, I'm not going to be able to touch. That that's part of what makes it feel like a school, per se. Now, if you looked at the 700 block and that new building that we're proposing, you got this one little line right down the center, that's the hallway, right? That typically, when you're doing an apartment complex, 92% on average is going to be rentable apartment space. And that 8% leftover is going to be hallway, stair, elevator kind of thing. When you do something like this, all of a sudden, I'm at like 62% of my space is actually going to be rentable space in that historic building. So there's, there's a cost to it, but then there's also inefficiency give up that I'm doing here that I, because I want to do it as a historic building, I just can't get as much rent as I normally could per square footage because I'm giving it up to try to keep it as historic fabric. Does that make sense? Awesome. You know, I would point to too, you know, you guys have seen the Beach Building. You know, that was a historic preservation project that came in at a 3% rate of return. You saw the Washington Building. I think I said that was going to come in at a 0.5% rate of return. And I think Ailer said, no, Tim, you're wrong. It's actually like a minus 0.7% rate of return. The Granary Project was a project where we were looking at, I think it was like a 3.4% rate of return. And all of those were over the course of 27 years. To some extent, to some extent, because the gymnasium isn't necessarily historic fabric, I'm actually going to be a little better off on this because I'm not going to have to deal with all the historic issues in that. You know, part of the reason why the district sold the building was because there was substantial deferred maintenance. Now, admittedly, a lot of the stuff that they were going to have to fix, we won't have to do because we're turning it into apartments. But the roof still has substantial issues. There's still a large amount of cost that we're going to have to bear just to get this up and going. If I consider it relative to, say, the Beach Building or the Washington Building or the Granary, I didn't have to put a new roof on the whole thing. So there's a lot of issues here. But figuring that we're going to get some efficiency from not having historic on the gymnasium, I was looking at an 18-year TIF bringing us a 5.2% rate of return. And we kind of figured that would be something we would be interested in doing if we were just doing the market rate sort of thing. So we're trying to make sure that if we're proposing historic preservation thing, that we're not coming in and asking you guys for a full 27 years. We appreciate that's a hard pill to swallow for you. Any questions on Smith School? Yes, sir.
So, this one's different in the sense that you don't, are you still going to go to WIDA and ask? I think you talked about that, about going, about making an ask for tax credits.
If we don't get the 700 block, so we would find that out in April. If we don't get it for the 700 block, then there's a chance that we would propose this as a tax credit project. We would then be applying for it in December of this year. And so all of this would be put on hold for a while, per se.
Until you could.
Sue tax credits for the next year.
Okay. Otherwise, I mean, because the historic tax credits are different than the, than the WIDA credits.
Right.
So, one's, one's issued from a different entity.
Right.
There's less compliance, national, you know, regulation compliance that goes along with that. And so, so it's, it's both of those elements that you'll be looking at wanting to have. You'll want to have the tax, the regular tax credits in addition to.
We would need it.
The historic tax credits.
Because the historic tax credit wouldn't apply to the new building at all. It would only be that historic structure kind of thing. So we would, we would be coming back.
Okay.
So, my question is, so you're only looking at 25 apartments for Smith School?
25 plus. There's still a question of what we can do with the gymnasium and how the elevator lines up. But.
So in, in either of these scenarios, so the first one, we get more affordable housing or low-income affordable housing, if 700 block happens. If it doesn't, and this, this flips over and you apply for Lytech.
If we applied for Lytech, we would want to make that a 60-unit.
Okay.
Lytech project.
All right, that's what I want.
Usable.
Yep.
So you just said elevator. I'm perplexed.
There is an elevator in Smith School that is.
I knew that.
And we don't want to have to put another elevator in. So that's why we would attach to the existing building if we're doing a Lytech project.
And creating a second floor?
The new, the new building would have, yes, it would be two-story.
Okay.
Any other questions on Smith? All right. Uh, I'm just going to skip these. They're pretty pictures of historic Smith, but we'll move on. So here's the next project that we are considering. 111 North Main, the US Bank Building. So conceptually, this is what we would look to do with this particular building, that the first floor, US Bank occupies the first floor of that building. But you can see there's a canopy on the top of that first floor there. And what we would look to do is turn the rest of the floors into condo units. Moreover, what we would want to do then is, I'm not moving. Uh-oh, there we go. So what we would want to do with that canopy then is provide a stairwell out of it, out on the second floor and have kind of a private park. So there would be this walkway on top of that canopy. We would have plants and potentially grass out there for the owners of the potential condo units. And then we would be cutting in windows on the backside of the building. But really, the top four to potentially five floors. The fifth floor, or I'm sorry, the sixth floor right now is filled with mechanicals. And if we go to residential condo unit, it's plausible that we could turn that into an additional floor of condo units. But we still got to figure out all the mechanicals and whether or not that is something that is possible.
What's the orientation we're looking at? What elevation? Where's the orientation we're looking at? What elevation?
You're looking northeast.
We're looking, yeah, northeast.
If you were on the upper, upper floor of the hotel garage, if that garage was about four stories higher. Is that right, Tim?
Yep, yep. All right, I am not, oh, there we go. So roughly, the first floor is 10,000 feet of commercial. I get, most people would look at that building and say, what, why do we think we need to do anything with it? Well, this is kind of the reason why. That in large respect, I kind of point to this building and say, it's very analogous to the Beach Building. But right now, you are looking at 16% occupancy. And it's really, US Bank is on the first floor, and then there are two attorneys sporadic throughout the rest of the floors in terms of occupancy. The original interior finishes are the 1972 finishes from when this thing was originally built. That's not necessarily good. The main mechanicals are at the end of life. Right now, they've got a rented chiller that they're using, and the boiler is basically done. Now, if we turn this into condos, we don't need to use that. But this is a major investment for somebody to turn around and try to turn back into commercial space. And the biggest dilemma with it is the parking in terms of commercial space. That there are 63 parking stalls on this site. I think 58 of them are underground parking, but then the remaining are up on that surface area there. In terms of occupancy, or in terms of thinking about how much parking would you need for commercial space, typically, you take in, divide your overall square footage by 300. The amount of parking that would need to utilize this as a commercial space is substantially more than what is available there. So that's one of the dilemmas as to why somebody hasn't come in and tried to do renovation and turned this into commercial space. So, we look at it and say, well, what is the benefit to the community? Well, one, we are looking at providing a new sort of housing that in downtown, you are going to be hard-pressed to find something like this, to own something new. So we're looking at providing that. And then I would say that we are kind of proactively addressing the question of highest and best use, and trying to avoid a building turning into blight. If I look at what this project could bring back using data, I think I'm at a 8.2% on a 15-year TIF. That's me projecting what I think these condos could sell for. I will admit that if I listen to real estate agents, and they want to list these particular parcels, and if I were to believe what they would tell me, I may not even need TIF, per se. But I don't necessarily believe real estate agents when they tell me what they think something can sell for. But I would be open to the prospect of, we would be substantially open to the prospect of, let's have a very short look-back clause on this, in case this does take off really well. That would kind of be the structure that we would look for on something like this. We believe we need assistance. The data tells me I need assistance. But data isn't always right, and if it takes off, we stop this thing really quickly and we go with it. In the grand scheme of things, this is something that we have not acquired. We just got 120-day option on this thing. If TIF isn't on the table, we don't want to acquire this property. So, if you got feedback that this is something that you just don't feel like is tolerable, please tell us right away.
Yeah, where's the but-for on this one?
The but-for is taking the risk on a downtown housing option at only an 8.2% internal rate of return, holding on to this commercial piece that... So we would hold on to the first floor, renting out, US Bank would stay in there. But in the grand, this is an 8.2% internal rate of return with TIF assistance. Without TIF assistance, I think I'm back at a 2%.
What's the assumption on the sales for the condos?
On average, so there's, there's 16 condos is what I'm considering, and I'm considering selling them for $250,000 apiece. Now, the real estate agents tell me I can get $350,000 apiece, and I'm going, I've seen the River Mill condos, and admittedly, it's a different product, but I just don't see that happening down here.
Are they two-bedroom condos, or three-bedrooms, some of them?
Or wide open. Build the suit.
So what, so Chet has done this before in Madison, where you kind of go in and white-box and put partitions up. There could be two bedrooms, there could be three bedrooms. And he wants to give the potential condo owner the ability to finish out the interior design, however many bedrooms, how big they want them themselves. But, so we're looking at it as, let's go in and white-box it, and then go try to sell it.
So, any rough idea of square footage?
It's, well, on here, I had 49,000 square feet is the overall building. I think we were at 8,000 square feet per floor. So, and we were looking at, I think, four per floor, so 2,000 square feet. But we probably got to take out 400 square feet on average. So like 1,600 square feet per unit on average. Some could be bigger, some could be smaller, but...
So if you're assuming 250, and Realtors are saying 350, what is the 300, if it comes in at 300,000 per unit due to that IRR?
At a 15-year, I haven't done it, but it's definitely going to go up. It could go up to 12, it could go up to 14. I don't, I don't know exactly, but we could certainly lay that all out for you to consider, kind of thing, that... All right. I'm going to move on, because we've only got a few minutes left. I don't mean to short-change this one at all. But, so this is 531, or 537 North Main. This was originally the Gibson Tire Building. In 1927, it was built as Gibson Tire. You guys probably all know what has Crescent Moon. But Crescent Moon sold the building to Eric Hoopman. He wants to turn this into a community space, a community hall, kind of thing. This particular building, this kind of gives you an interior rendering that RH Design Build has done for it. This building is listed in the Historic District, there's the Downtown Historic District, as a contributing member. If we look at the Oshkosh Landmarks Commission tour of downtown, this is one of the buildings that they call out. The terracotta tile in front is something that is substantially unique. So this is something that can be listed in the Register of Historic Places. So we're going to go for historic tax credits on this particular project. Again, when you go in and do a historic preservation sort of project, and you start encountering the historic fabric, it turns into something that becomes very expensive. So, we were looking at a 7.2% internal rate of return, if we had TIF over 20 years. We've still got some more investigation. This is, this is ballparking without having all of the bids coming back, but estimating the heating in this building could potentially turn into a major expense. And there's a question about, do we want to chill it in the summer or not? But this is a project...
That taking into account that big industrial skylight on top of the building?
It's, it's there, yes, we would have to, because we're doing it historic, we can't insulate it, kind of thing, but, right.
So there's the, one of the heating challenges.
The heat loss, yes, or air conditioning loss, yes. That's kind of a quick summary of this one, and I've got two minutes, so I'm going to stop there and ask if you guys got any questions about this one, or anything that we're proposing here.
I guess, was there a feasibility or inventory of the other hall space that we have? Like Howard and the other options, and what that would add?
I think he, I think Eric was looking at this to serve as an alternative for weddings, in that all of those spaces get booked up for wedding sorts of venues. This would be a slightly cheaper version. It's not the greatest location necessarily. But I think what he's looking to do, fake a historic building and make it look really cool, per se. And he also wants to, that parking lot to the north of it, fix that up substantially, put some landscaping and stuff there to make it better.
So, in essence, it's not necessarily going to be a 365-day-a-year business. It's going to be upon booking and stuff like that, and so...
That's my understanding.
So is that estimated budget including the parking lot, or not?
So, 1 to 1.2 million is including the parking lot, right now, yes.
So this internal rate of return is based on certain assumptions about how often it would be rented, as opposed to apartment building, which you, you know, you're putting in a small vacancy factor. I would imagine you had a pretty high vacancy factor, you had it built into something like this, because the nature of the beast is, on a Tuesday night, it may not be as busy every weekend.
Every weekend will be booked a year in advance, pretty quickly. I mean, there's, it's just, there's that strong of a market in Oshkosh for that already, so...
But that, I guess my, that's the real key to the internal rate of return, because, you know, if you could rent it on Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursday night, you might not even need help.
Exactly.
Correct.
That's, that is true.
But it's because it's the infrequency of the uses, that's what's driving down the internal rate of return.
But I would say that the revenue that we're proposing to generate here is higher than what I would typically anticipate getting at seven bucks a square foot down on Main Street, per se. So, you can kind of say it's almost the highest and best use type thing. You're getting more...
We have some youth recently trying to get a youth entertainment, like rec, area. I mean, is, if it goes historic, does that like restrict it to...
We shouldn't restrict the use. Do it as a historic building, I think that would be a question for Eric, is that a use he would want to make?
It could be during the weekend, between the other events, I don't know if it's a multi-use functional, or flexible space, or what.
Tim, I'd like to go back to the US Bank Building, if you don't mind, because the IRR there is based on, I think the mayor asked the question. You've got, you're taking a more conservative approach on the prices of the condos, going, averaging them out at 250. Do you have, can you do an IRR analysis that if it averages 250, 3, 350, to kind of get an idea?
I would say I would, I would definitely, I mean, that's really easy to do. And then, as part of the TIF application packet, I would show you, here's my sales of everything in the community to try to justify why I believe 250 is what it would be. You know, I, that's kind of the level of detail of what I think I should be bringing to you guys to justify this.
Because there's a couple of those River Mill ones right now that are going for like 265, the less price.
Yep, yep, they're a lot bigger than, well, some, some are bigger, some are smaller. They've got a mix there.
Some are outdated, though, too, and I'm assuming this would be very modern.
This would be very modern, yes. Well, I almost hit the timeframe.
Yeah, you did all right.
Close, sorry.
So when do you anticipate submitting these applications? Is it really, are you waiting for the Lytec answer? Are you going to apply and then hope the Lytec comes? Because some of these, if...
I think the 700 block, we would want to wait until the Lytec. I think Smith, in our best estimation, we're going to, we would need assistance either way. So that, in March, we're hoping to get the final approval on historic. So we would try to get a relatively concurrent, that we know we're going to do, kind of thing.
So with Smith, we would probably look at approving the TIF, but we would probably wait on the
Wait on the development agreement.
Development agreement, until you get the answer.
Right.
So what happens to 700 block if you don't get Lytec, and you shift the Lytec over to Smith? Does, whatever, do you just vacate your option on 700 block? I have selfish reasons, it's not just about the TIF, it's about the redevelopment down there. What's your estimate on that?
I mean, that's Andy and Cal's call. I anticipate they would come and ask you guys to hold it for another year and try again. But I think everybody understands there are other people that are waiting for it, and if you guys make the decision, somebody else should get a shot at it.
With your other hat, Madam Mayor, that's probably where that, the assumption that you, you were assuming that it was based on what he proposed, so... Okay, good, I thought it was good to let everybody be in on that.
How long is the option?
One to six months, off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yep, right about the time to hear from Lytec, I guess.
Have any sense of what the other, do you get to know what some of the other submissions are in that same timeframe? Or is it blind?
Blind. Afterwards, you can go look at it, but it's blind.
It's nerve-wracking.
And, well, I can say, you got this point system, and the difference between the top point getter and the line at which they no longer give the awards is like 10 points. So it's, it can be, some years, very, very tight.
So from what I understand, with WIDA to Winnebago County, can ask for a voluntary 5% minority or women-owned business participation? Does that give you any additional, even though it's voluntary, if you do create that 5% MBE, does that give you any extra points or weight in your application?
I'm sorry, that, that one's above me. That's an Andy or Cal, probably a Cal, to be quite honest. I don't know that.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.